Good evening. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, March 21st, and I'm calling this workshop of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. I do want to give a couple of quick notes. These microphones here pick up everything, so if you want to be heard by the rest of the world, say something near one. With that being said, I do also want to let folks know that we do have a little bit of weather and we have our emergency services staff who are watching. So if we do need to take shelter, there will be somebody at the back door there directing. You'll go out to the left and downstairs. We have a basement that is hardened for that kind of purpose. But I would expect that Chief McNeil over there is going to keep us weather aware, so he's got his team watching. So I appreciate that. With that, we're going to move into discussion of the regular agenda items and the consent agenda. So council, if you please, check your packets. Item, let's see here, D1, public hearing. Item F, consent agenda two. Item four. And I think, Mr. Erb, do we have you for that one?
I think he was on number one.
Number one? I just blew right past that one. Yeah, and let's go back to item one real quick. Mr. Erb, if you could kind of walk us back through the history of this one for just a moment, just so that everybody, because this had a couple of steps we needed to follow.
So at the last council meeting, we had a resolution to authorize the public hearing, which we're going to hold today. And the public hearing is required because the developer has requested amendment to the service and assessment plan. This is for the Josie Lane Pid. They are requesting to modify the collection date by one year. Again, this requires an amendment of the service and assessment plan. The original first collection date was for January of 2024, but because the developer is able to move forward quickly or more quickly on the selling of those plots for redevelopment to the homeowners, they're asking to move up to January of 2023. The major reason that we're doing this is it'll prevent homeowner confusion. If they were to go in now without the amendment, they would have a first year without the assessment and then they would see assessment on the second year, which I think would cause confusion to the homeowner. So to prevent that, the developer is asking for that change. This does not change the amount that the city's committed to pay on behalf or to the developer for the Josie Lane development. It does actually slightly lower the assessment for the homeowner due to changes in the allocation of the size of the watch. So that is an improvement there. There's going to be two things that are going to be asked of this public hearing. The first is going to be approval of the ordinance to amend the service and assessment plan. And the second is the resolution to amend the reimbursement agreement with the developer.
Counsel, any questions on that one? Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and move back to item four. Item seven. Hopefully, one of the last ones of those, we'll see.
Yes.
Item eight. Counsel, do we have any recommendations for item eight?
You, Eudora?
We have two positions. And I, to be quite honest, we have several very, very good. I'm having a hard time narrowing it down.
We're female-heavy on that. It'd be nice to get a man.
That was my thought, yes.
So, yeah, it's kind of hard.
Which committee are you talking about?
CDBG.
You're recommending a female.
Yeah, I did. I was, there was a male I was very, very interested in, but he's no longer in the running. That's Mr. Montoya. I'm good with however you want to go.
So CDBG would be recommended, Eudora? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not necessarily. She was one of my two.
Who was your other?
I couldn't choose between the two, so I was hoping somebody else could help me out.
I really like Eudora.
I do, too.
Because we need that demographic on there as well. We do need a strong male on there as well, too.
I think it sounds like we've got two qualified candidates there on CDBG, and we can discuss that as we get into the rest of the meeting. Anything on arts? I don't know if there's urgency on that one. Or is there?
Yes, there is. They're getting ready to do their process right now, so they really do need someone.
So we really do need that one.
I had Christie marked.
Christie's been a longtime advocate of the arts in the community, so, Christie Martin. I would definitely think that she would be an outstanding addition to the arts board.
He was my top pick.
Okay. With that, if we want some more conversation, we have plenty of time during the meeting.
Yes.
But I did want to get kind of a feel for where people were, if they'd had a chance to take a look at that. All right. And item nine, consideration and approval of the council priorities for 2022. Did you want to say anything to that?
Counsel, just a follow-up on the memo was just trying to make sure that we were articulating these priorities the way council intended them to be. So if these are acceptable, then to approve them as provided. But if not, then we'd like to have some feedback.
If there is no further comment on the agenda items or consent, we now go to workshop session item B, review of annual comprehensive financial report and popular annual financial report. Mr. Erb? And I still want to call this a caper. I know we're two years in, but...
I would suggest you stop.
Yeah, we'll have to stop that.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I appreciate the time to come up and present not only the annual comprehensive financial report, but the popular annual financial report. Now, you saw both of these in the past, but we weren't able to make an actual formal presentation at the time that the annual comprehensive financial report was accepted because we hadn't quite finished it yet. The popular annual financial report is a summarized version of our complete annual financial report showing the results of 2021. I first want to say thanks to the accounting team. They did an absolute wonderful job. And the folks that were involved in the popular annual financial report did a wonderful job in putting this together for this meeting tonight. A lot of input was also received from James Kunkke and his team to put this together, so we're very appreciative of that. But I just wanted to say a few comments. Again, this is a summarized version of the complete annual financial report. It's a little less technical, a little more understandable for the lay reader. So I think they'll get a lot more out of it than if they were to open a 200-page annual financial report. I'm just going to quickly walk you through the contents and then you can spend more time perusing it in your leisure. I do want to make one more comment before I walk through. We submitted this report, or this, yes, this report, to the GFOA's recognition program in our first year out, and we received recognition. So kudos to the team that put that together. And we're going to submit again this year for that recognition. And just quickly, it's going to cover the major areas of the annual report. So we're going to cover statements that are entity-wide. So balance sheets and income statements, as you would probably be familiar with, of the entire entity. And then we move on to the, well, actually, let's start with some of the more important stuff like introduction to the mayor and the city manager and city council, or chart of the complete organization. And we also include demographic information about the city. We want to include areas of success and achievements for the year. So the budget, distinguished budget award, the annual certificate of achievement for the audit, the purchasing award, and now with the PAFRA award. I think we've got the trifecta from the GFOA and purchasing for recognition. As far as finance, I think that's something that we strive for. We also include information about economic development within the city. Again, these are just highlights, and these are excerpts from the complete report. So if you want detailed information, just go back to that report. Again, condensed summary of the annual financials. So where you might see seven or eight pages of financials, we're going to condense it into one or two. We supplement the tables with charts and graphs, a little more graphic, a little more reader-friendly. Yes. After the general fund, we'll move on to the debt service fund and the utility funds. Again, the major operating sections of the city. And then we close with a note to the reader. We've added the OCR so that the reader can actually get it on a mobile app or on their phone. We also have links that will take the reader to the PAFRA and the CAFRA, excuse me, ACFA. Got me there. And all this information is posted electronically on our website or will be after the council accepts the award. So that's just a short and quick about the PAFRA. Now, I'm going to bring up John DeBurro. He's our partner from Weaver and Tudwell. They've been our auditor for several years, and John has been our partner. And he's going to go over the nitty-gritty of the report with you. And then he's going to be available for questions, if there's any.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting me tonight to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2021 audit. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John DeBurro. I'm the audit partner with Weaver and have a presentation to go through with you that will combine a number of things, go through the audit results, talk about the audit process, go over some of our required communications. And then I've got a section of some financial highlights with some numbers that are derived directly from this year's and last year's financial statements. And before I begin, I'd just like to take a minute to thank Dave and the rest of the finance staff for all their hard work in making it a very successful audit. Giving a little bit of an introduction, I mentioned I served as the audit partner. Meredith Churchill was the manager. And Michelle Gilli ran the day-to-day fieldwork along with one of our staff, Chris Walker. And I know what you're waiting for, the audit results. I have good news. We've issued three reports in conjunction with our audit. The first is our independent auditors' report on the city's financial statements. And we've issued an unmodified opinion, which means that we feel that the city's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. So that's great news. We've also issued two other reports in relation to our consideration of the city's internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And we're happy to report that there were no findings in that report. And then our third report is our independent auditors' report on compliance for each major federal and state program and internal control of compliance with those programs. The city had to have both a state single audit and a federal single audit this year. And I'm happy to report that there were unmodified opinions on both of those reports as well as no findings. So very clean audit. And we actually started our audit last summer in August when we came out to conduct interim fieldwork and came back in January. And we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as generally accepted government auditing standards and what's known as the Uniform Guidance, which is what governs the federal single audit. And we used what's known as a risk-based approach to our audit. We can't audit every single transaction of the city, so we try to tailor our resources more heavily in the areas that we feel are more of high risk of material misstatement. And I've listed out some of those on this slide, things such as revenue recognition, federal and state grant revenues and expenditures, capital projects, purchasing and compliance with bidding requirements, payables, accrued liabilities, long-term liabilities. And even for this past year, we had to look at the effects of COVID and how that affected some of our expectations on things. So when we came out during the summer to perform interim fieldwork, we concentrated on looking at the city's internal controls and the various processes over the significant accounting transaction cycles. And we identified the controls. If we had seen any weaknesses, any control deficiencies, we would have brought those up to management. But thankfully, we did not identify any control weaknesses. Then we walked through transactions to make sure that the controls that were described to us were actually in place and operating as designed. We performed tests of the city's compliance with things such as the Public Funds Investment Act and tests of controls over cash disbursements and payroll transactions and testing of capital projects. When we came back during the wintertime in January and February, we used a variety of techniques such as sampling, vouching, and analytics to test the city's balances as well as the activity for the year. And we evaluate various estimates that are embodied in the financial statements. When we came out during the wintertime as well, I mentioned that we had to conduct both a federal and state single audit. There was one major program for each. The federal single audit had a one major program, the CDBG program. And the state single audit was what's known as the TIPMS grant. And as I mentioned, I'm happy to report that there were no findings and no incidents of noncompliance. The next section goes through our required communications. And I won't go through all these word for word because a lot of these have kind of paraphrased already. But we're required to communicate to you our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, which really are to express an opinion on the city's financial statements based on our audit procedures. And as I mentioned, we've issued an unmodified opinion. The responsibilities under generally accepted government auditing standards, in addition to those, are that we issue a written report on the city's internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. And again, there were no findings in that report. And our responsibilities under the Uniform Guidance are to express an opinion on the city's compliance with the major federal and state financial assistance programs. And again, unmodified opinions on both the state and federal grant programs. We're also required to communicate to you the adoption of any new accounting pronouncements. And there was a new accounting pronouncement that was adopted by the city this year, and that was GASB statement 84, known as fiduciary activities. And it just changed the requirements for reporting fiduciary activities. So now the city's former agency fund is now what's called a custodial fiduciary fund, and it just reports the activity of that fiduciary fund in addition to just the balances. There were no any material errors, irregularities, or illegal acts noted during our testing, no material weaknesses, really no difficulties whatsoever in conducting our audit. We had no disagreements with management over the application of any accounting standards, no independence issues. I'm also happy to report that we're required to communicate to whether we had any significant adjustments that we had to make to the city's numbers in arriving at the financial statements. I'm happy to report that there were no such adjustments that needed to be made, and there were no past adjustments, ones that we felt that were immaterial, that were not of either category. So great news all around. And then I'd just like to share with you for a few minutes some financial highlights. As I mentioned, these are derived directly from both this year's and last year's financial statements. And the first couple of slides go through the city's revenues for the governmental funds, which for fiscal year 2021 totaled $149.7 million. And that was a $5.6 million increase over the previous year. And it was really the net effect of a number of things. You had property and other taxes that increased by $13.3 million, licenses and permits by $1 million. And then contributions decreased by $3.5 million, intergovernmental revenues decreased by $3.1, as did investment income by $3.2 million. And this next slide really kind of shows you the side-by-side comparisons of each of those revenue sources. You can see the property and other taxes increasing from $101.7 million in fiscal 2020 up to $150 million this past year. And similarly with the other revenue sources that I mentioned. These next two slides will go through the governmental funds expenditures. This past year, governmental funds expenditures totaled $159.4 million. That was a $1.8 million increase over the previous year, or 1.1%. And the biggest changes from year to year were that public safety expenditures increased $8.1 million, while general government expenditures decreased by 5.3. And again, side-by-side comparison, you can see the general government expenditures decreasing from $20.4 to $15.1, while public safety increased from $53 to $61.1. Overall, the city's fund balance as of fiscal year end was $192.9 million. And it had increased by $39.1 over the previous year, primarily due to a $30.9 million increase in the city's general capital projects fund. And that was really the result of the issuance of bonds for future capital projects. And unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is a good indicator of the strength of the fund balance in the general fund, was $46.1 million. And that represents 52% of the general fund expenditures, which is healthy. Looking at the general fund budget versus actual comparison, overall, the city's general fund had a favorable budgetary variance of $17.5 million. And that's really comprised primarily of two things. One, the revenues in the general fund exceeded the budget by $12.2 million, while expenditures were $4.7 million under budget. And finally, I just wanted to go through a little bit with you of the city's enterprise funds. In the enterprise funds this year, the net position increased by $17 million over the previous year. Operating revenues increased by $3.3 million, primarily due to rate increases for water and sewer, while operating expenses increased by $1.8 million, primarily due to the cost of sales increase. Nonoperating expenses increased $1.4 million, mostly due to a decrease in investment earnings this past year, while capital contributions and transfers increased by $1.2 million, primarily due to an increase in impact fees. And then in a nutshell is the audit. Again, very, very good audit, very clean audit. And I really thank Dave and his staff for doing such a great job. GASB, who governs government accounting, stays very busy at this time of year. And there's a new pronouncement that the city will have to implement this coming year. But I have a lot of confidence in the finance staff that they're already well-prepared for that transition where leases are going to be on the financial statements for the first time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How many years have you guys been our auditor?
A what?
How many years have you been our auditor, Weaver?
I would have to look back.
I'm just curious. Have you guys rotated partners or account seniors?
I know we're on a new rotation. The city went out, I think it was three years ago, for, went out to bid.
I think Dave has an answer over your shoulder.
I know Dave knows, so I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that, actually, John was starting to talk to it. We did a request for proposal four years ago where they were a successful bidder. We have a mandatory requirement to go off RFP every five years. So we'll be doing that after the fiscal '22 audit. And then at that time, Weaver and Tudwell can participate. But there would be some requirements as far as changing partners and that kind of thing.
I was curious about it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And I want to first and foremost thank staff because every single department feeds into Mr. Erb and his team. And you guys get to take all of that and turn it into this. So I mean, it's a top-down, bottom-up, all parts of the organization that feed into these documents. And I really, really appreciate it because I think it very, very clearly states to residents that we take our tax dollars and our responsibilities very seriously in this city, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one closing comment. We will be submitting for the certificate of achievement award for recognition in excellence in financial reporting. And I believe we've received it for 32 consecutive years. So my job is just to kind of keep the train on the track and get that for the next year. And again, I just want to recognize the accounting staff. I do get a lot of credit. But they actually wanted to attend here today just to listen in on the presentation. But they do do a lot of the work. And a lot of times, I'm just cheerleader, keeping them going. So anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Amazing work, as always. All right, we have about five minutes before we start into regular sessions. So we're going to just take a small pause, get up and stretch, whatever you need to do. And we'll be back in five minutes to start the regular session. All right, it is 7:01 PM, and I'm going to call the regular session of the Lewisville City Council meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Invocation, Deputy Mayor Protem Jones, please.
Please rise for a moment of silent contemplation and pray for those who are affected by this storm. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, by the blessings of the name Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I did that at Rotary this week, so I know. It happens.
I got tornadoes on the mind. I got my little children out there, grandbabies.
All right, so we have some presentations to do. And I think our Director of Communications and Tourism, Mr. James Kunkke, is here to present our Spirit of Lewisville Award honorees. Mr. Kunkke, do you need me down there to help with that or just to look pretty? Perfect. Before you do that, I do want to recognize some guests at the back of the room, though. We do have Boy Scout Troop 787 here tonight. Appreciate you guys. Folks, I'm very proud of scouting and what it's done for my family and for me and my twin sons. And I really appreciate you guys. I hope to see you making the tour with your Eagle Scout when you get to that point in your scouting adventure. But I appreciate you guys coming out here and learning a little bit more about how local government works. It's very important. Mr. Kunkke?
Yes, sir. I never mind taking a backseat to Boy Scouts. So Mayor and council, as a city, we use dozens of volunteers on a daily basis. And every one of them is important, and every one of them is valuable. What we find is, as the year goes on, there's generally one or two situations where a particular volunteer or volunteer group, or in one case, a business, steps up beyond expectations, where the work they do, side-by-side with city staff, helps us to achieve objectives and goals and positive results for our residents that we simply could not have accomplished without their help. So for that purpose, we created the Spirit of Lewisville Awards. This is our fourth year to have this. And these awards don't replace other recognitions. This is just an extra little push to recognize those people who have gone above and beyond in their volunteerism for this community. Now, we have two presentations to make tonight. Because of the storm, I think most of our recipients are absent. But we're going to push forward anyway because we don't want a little bit of rain to stop us here in Texas. And then we will make contact with the recipients afterward. So first, I'd ask Caitlin from Public Services to step forward with our first presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It is my honor to present Tom Rowe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my honor to present Tom Rowe. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program is a grant-funded initiative that helps divert harmful materials away from landfills and watersheds. However, the program is very reliant on volunteers, which put the program in jeopardy during the pandemic peaks of 2020 and 2021. Volunteer Tom Rowe was not deterred. He already was an HHW volunteer when pandemic restrictions put the program on hold through the spring and summer of 2020. When the program transitioned to an appointment-only model in October 2020, Tom stepped forward to become our keystone volunteer. Tom lives in Plano but commutes to Lewisville for HHW collection events and attends his wine tasting business nearby. During the first 14 months of appointment-only collections, Tom volunteered more than 350 hours to support the program and Lewisville residents who benefit from it. Wearing a mask outdoors in unpredictable Texas weather while moving heavy televisions and paint cans is not exactly a dream volunteer position, but Tom performed the work willingly and cheerfully. He has been on-site during Wednesday and Friday collections and helped offload literally tons of materials brought in by Lewisville residents. When asked why he does it, Tom explains that he's just happy to help, but without him, the city could not have met the HHW needs of its residents during 2021. Tom's efforts ensured that the city was able to provide consistent and positive outcomes for the Household Hazardous Waste Program under extremely challenging circumstances that could have mothballed the program indefinitely. City staff would not have been able to maintain the program without his invaluable work. For these reasons, Tom Rowe is being recognized with the 2022 Spirit of Louisville Award. Thank you.
I am not Tom Rowe. Unfortunately, Tom not able to be here. The storm actually passed right over Tom, so probably better that he stayed away. So we'll move to our second presentation of a Spirit of Louisville Award for this evening. And I know we have at least one of our Castle Hills ambassadors present. Two. If I can ask both of you to come forward, please. We have three. So I'm going to read the description of the work that this group is actually nine, but we have three with us today, so each of you be three people worth of appreciation as we go forward. So the annexation of the Castle Hills community into Lewisville was less than a year away at the start of 2021, but there was a sense that many Castle Hills residents were unsure what annexation meant and uninformed about Lewisville services and government practices. City staff worked with the Water District Boards and Castle Hills management to create the Castle Hills Annexation Education Committee. This group included representatives from each of the eight district boards. They met once or twice a month through the spring and received highly detailed information about Lewisville operations. When the group's scheduled meetings were nearly complete, some members recognized the need to continue providing consistent communication to Castle Hills residents prior to annexation and during the ensuing transition period. Five members formed a communications subcommittee that worked closely with city staff to prepare resident information packets, plan annexation-related events, and deliver important messages to Castle Hills residents. At the start of November, the group added four members and transitioned into the Castle Hills ambassadors with the charge of serving as a liaison between the city and Castle Hills residents during the time between annexation and the first city council election that will include Castle Hills voters in May of 2022. Ambassadors, I'll read all nine names, and as I call your name, if you'll just give a little wave. In fact, I'll pull the pipe out. I only have two hands. I've run out of hands. So our ambassadors are Tanya Carlos, Chris Crawford, John Deal, who is present, Katrina English is present, Catherine Griffith, Guy Harris, Colleen Marchetti, Steve Manier, and Mark Samuels. These highly motivated individuals meet online, met online weekly into January and continue to meet every other week now. They help the city deliver information to residents, bring neighborhood concerns and questions to the city for resolution, and advise city staff on new communication and neighborhood efforts that should be considered. The annexation of Castle Hills was a massive project, one of the largest annexations in the history of the state. It essentially was akin to adding a small town to a small city, merging services and resources that did not always match up easily. By all accounts, the annexation has been performed very smoothly with widespread understanding and acceptance among Castle Hills residents. It is extremely unlikely that the annexation would have been so seamless had staff not received such strong assistance from the Castle Hills ambassadors. For this reason, the Castle Hills ambassadors are being recognized with a 2022 Spirit of Louisville Award. Any of you like to say anything before we close out?
You know, talking about...
Is this better?
Perfect.
Anytime you talk about the annexation of a community into a city, you can probably equate it to what's going on outside. But the truth of the matter was, it was anything but that. I think that, you know, personally, we worked really hard to educate our residents and to work on that transition, but they...I'm really proud to call Lewisville home. Lewisville's the city I'm from. But in fact, it's just a city. What's really makes is the people, the people of the city of Louisville that worked with us, the people in the community that welcomed us into the city, and I'm so grateful for that. Everybody worked really hard. You know, quick call out to Brenda, Donna, and James, the master of symphonies that really brought us together. It was a really good showing of how, you know, the city of Louisville is a really special place, and like I said, a place that I'm proud to call home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank all the award recipients, those who are here and who are not. You all embody what we talk about when we talk about building community. It doesn't happen from a podium. It doesn't happen from the four walls of City Hall. It happens when residents step up and give of their time and their treasure. Those of us who are here, we give a lot of time and we give a lot of energy, but without residents to help with that lift, it is very difficult to build community. So you guys are doing a phenomenal job. I love it. Thank you for modeling the behavior that we need to see more of in this country.
Thank you, Mayor. Unless there's any questions, that concludes our presentation.
Thanks, sir. All right. Item D, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan for Josie Lane Public Improvement District and consideration of a resolution approving the first amendment to the Josie Lane Public Improvement District reimbursement agreement. The Josie Lane Public Improvement District, PID, was created to finance the costs of construction of street and water wastewater improvements in a designated area located along Josie Lane north of FM 544 and south of Windhaven Drive. The developer is requesting to modify the beginning collection dates of assessments within Phase 2 West of the PID. This will require approval of an amended and restated preliminary service and assessment plan. The changes brought forth in this amended and restated service and assessment plan do not change the amount committed by the city to the Josie Lane PID. The resolution authorizing this public hearing and change to the service and assessment plan was approved at the March 7, 2022 city council meeting. It is recommended that the city council conduct the public hearing, approve the ordinance, and approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote.
Oh, Mayor.
They're closing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion passes five to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance and resolution as set forth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
City Attorney.
This is an ordinance approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan for Josie Land Public Improvement District.
All right. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you. Item E, Visitor-Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or to staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have anyone for public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Do we have anybody out there that's here for any type of public comment? I know we...I saw a couple of faces from an event this weekend. Are you guys good? Okay, outstanding. All right. Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, any comments on consent?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item G, six. Consideration of an ordinance setting forth the Second Amendment to Contract and Exclusive Franchise for Collection and Disposal of Residential Garbage, Refuse, Yard Waste, Bulky Waste, and Containerized Commercial Solid Waste and Collection and Processing of Residential and Multifamily Dwelling Recyclables Within the City of Louisville, Texas. On November 16, 2020, city council approved an exclusive franchise agreement for the collection of residential garbage, refuse, yard waste, bulky waste, recyclables, containerized waste, and multifamily recycling with Allied Waste Solutions Incorporated, doing business as Republic Services of Louisville Republic. This franchise ordinance provided the cost of disposal per ton for commercial solid waste for disposal at DFW landfill. The amendment will allow for adjusting the disposal rate per ton when the disposal facility changes. The city charter requires amendments to a franchise ordinance to be read twice 30 days apart and go into effect no earlier than 30 days after the final reading. The first reading will be on March 21, 2022. The second reading will be on May 2, 2022, and the amendment will be effective on June 1, 2022. Staff does not anticipate a change in service delivery due to this request. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council?
Motion to approve is set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney.
This is an ordinance setting forth the Second Amendment to Contract and Exclusive Franchise for Collection and Disposal of Residential Garbage, Refuse, Yard Waste, Bulky Waste, and Containerized Commercial Solid Waste and Collection and Processing of Residential and Multifamily Dwelling Recyclables Within the City of Louisville, Texas.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I do want to take a second to thank Republic Services for all the work. I know we had some challenges here in February where it got cold, and I'm very glad that you all chose to be safe. I know those trucks and those drivers, and they work really, really hard, and I would hate to have somebody have an accident there. Little extra garbage will be okay. So you guys are doing great. We appreciate you. Item seven, consideration of a variance to the Louisville City Code, Section 9.5-98 regarding pavement within a waterline easement at the proposed Alada Point development located at the southwest corner of Richland Street and Lynn Avenue as requested by Patrick Filson PE Kirkman Engineering LLC on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 2.94 acre lot with two proposed buildings. One building would be a 14,500 square foot office building, and the second building will be a 50-unit multifamily structure. The property is zoned Old Town Mixed Use 2. The developer is requesting a variance to allow pavement over an existing public waterline easement. The property is platted, and the Old Town Development Plan is currently under review. It is recommended that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above with the condition that the owner accepts responsibility for all pavement repairs required due to maintenance or repair of the city water main performed by city crews or city's contractor. Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, is available for questions? If there are none, council, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption with the condition that the owner accepts responsibility for all pavement repairs required due to maintenance or repair of the city water main performed by city crews or city contractor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to another. Nothing. Item eight, consideration of acceptance of resignation of Joyce White from Place Number One on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Community Committee. I can't speak tonight. CDBG, and Mary Hampton from Place Number Nine on the Arts Advisory Board. Declaration that vacancies exist on the CDBG and the Arts Advisory Board and consideration of appointments to Place Number One on the CDBG and Place Number Nine on the Arts Advisory Board. Staff has received resignation notices from Joyce White and Mary Hampton from their respective boards and committees. As these positions' term limits are not currently up for appointment, the city council needs to declare vacancies in Place One on the CDBG and Place Nine on the Arts Advisory Board. Data sheets of the applicants interested in serving on these two boards have been included for city council review. It is recommended that the council accepts the resignations, declares vacancies, and considers appointments as set forth in the captions. Council, let's kind of get a consensus here on CDBG first. Any comments or thoughts?
I'm good with Ms. Butler. If Mayor Protem and Councilmember Kate are good with her, she's done a lot of good stuff in the community.
Councilman?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on to Arts Board.
I think it sounds like we're...there's consensus on Christie.
Yeah, I'm good with Christie.
I'm good with that.
Great. All right, so we have our two appointees. What we'll need to do is motion to accept the resignations, declare the vacancies, and appoint those two people, whomever wants to own that one.
I will take the lead on that. I move that we accept the resignations for both boards, declare vacancies, and appoint Adora Butler to Place Number One on the CDBG Committee and Christie Martin for Place Number Nine on the Arts Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, council. Item nine, consideration and approval of the council priorities for 2022. During the city council retreat held March 3 through the 5, city council discussed nine priorities for the upcoming year. These areas of interest will be used as a guide for staff when determining budget needs as well as timing of projects. Staff would like to review these priorities with the city council to ensure that the final wording and interpretation of the priorities match city council intent. Our city manager, Claire Powell, will...
So Mayor and Council, just, these are in no particular order, but we started with city infrastructure and facilities that really went into, you know, making sure that we're completing all the projects that we've started, but also really focusing more on pay-as-you-go, so using cash funding when possible. We had 10-minute walk to part goals, so that talks about a lot of our initiatives in the Triangle Neighborhood. Affordable housing, that's really looking at leveraging our Housing Finance Corporation, potentially a public facility corporation, but that also includes all of our changes in our Unified Development Code and looking at incentives for development for affordable housing. It also includes our housing study that we will be getting done at the end of the year. Employee recruitment, development, and retention. Obviously, that's a big issue on every employer's mind right now, so it's doing everything we can to make sure we're employing, recruiting, developing, and retaining the best employees. We put down here justice, equity, diversity, inclusion goals. So this was originally two different goals that we combined and won. One of your goals was outreach to the Latinx community and Chin communities, but then the other one was DEI goals. And so really, in talking with several council members individually, it sounded like those two things really needed...the idea was that those things were probably one and the same, and so wanted to make sure a majority of council had a look at that. And then Old Town Development, that city council will continue actively pursue our development in Old Town and finding ways to remove obstacles and barriers to development. Business 121 corridor planning, mall redevelopment in the Lake District Northern Gateway. We've been calling it the Northern Gateway, but now trying to rebrand it as the Lake District. That would include on the east and west side of I-35. With that, I would be interested in seeing if there's anything we are missing from what your intentions were, but other than that, we would recommend that city council approve these priorities as set forth.
Council, any comments?
I would just say that I think you did a very good job of capturing at least the ones that I had put on here, so good job.
Therefore, I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interests regarding which no action will be taken. I'm going to start on my very far left with Councilmember Green this week.
You know, I don't, I don't have, I, I don't have anything to report, but I did have some observation that I kind of wanted to mention, that I believe this is our first meeting in about two years that we have not had to extend a disaster declaration, which is kind of ironic.
That is right.
Considering the weather this evening, but I thought that was worth mentioning because it's, I kind of feel like we've like got over a hurdle with that, and our, our glass is missing as well. So I think we're, we're, we're looking, things are looking up, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'm, I'm going to basically break promiscerces. I'm going to ask for a moment of personal privilege, and I'm, I'm not discomfortable at all, but I'm, I know how to break the rules. I just want to say happy anniversary to my wife. We've been married for seven years today.
Happy anniversary.
I have my anniversary socks on that have 32115 on it. That's all I have to say. She's at home now. She's coming down from freaking out about the storms. I think she's probably come out of the closet with her bike helmet off now, but I just want to say, love you, honey, and maybe have seven plus, however many more we can get.
That's so sweet.
That's all I have.
I, I just would like to say that we had a great showing at the Fox Henry Cemetery cleanup, and everybody worked themselves to the bone, and it was great. The weather was wonderful, all the people that came out and sponsored it were, it was just wonderful. So, thank you all very much.
City Manager?
I've got a few, a couple of library things for this week. Afternoon hangout for teens age 13 to 18, Tuesday, March 22, 3:45 to 5:15, no registration required, Teen Point, and all the rest, Book Club for adults, Tuesday, March 22, 6:30 to 7:30, no registration required, Crawford Meeting Room. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Excuse me. Councilmember Green stole my thunder. Pardon the pun, but I, I too was surprised, pleasantly surprised to see that the declaration of emergency was no longer on the agenda. It's been a long time coming. I do have a few things, a few things to announce for the Lewisville Grand Theater. There is, there's performances coming up. There is a Playreaders, Playreaders Club Festival presented by R Productions Theater Company on March 27. Point of View Ballet by, presented by Lake City's Ballet will be presented on April 1st and 2nd. The Lightning Thief, the Percy Jackson Musical, presented by R Productions Theater Company, April 6 through the 9. And Texas Tunes coming up on April 9 with Stephanie Urbina-Jones and the Honky Tonk Mariachis. In conjunction with this, there was an excellent Texas Tunes performance on Saturday night with Corey Morrow. It was well-received, and we had a, a nice turnout for that. You missed a good performance if you weren't there. And then, as always, on Friday nights, the Acoustic Jam takes place in the, in the Grand Theater presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, 6 to 9, every Friday night. In terms of activities, there will be a Garden Secrets class, Fruits, Nuts, and Berries, presented by Keep Lewisville Beautiful on March 31, and art exhibitions that are going on, first of all, Big Inspiration Fall Small Works presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville now through March 26, and then the Elementary East, Elementary East Art Exhibition presented by the Lewisville Independent School District goes from March 25 through April 9. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Officer, I have a new tradition with the PD. How you doing?
No announcements.
All right. We'll just keep working our way across the front.
No report, Mayor.
Thanks.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Lake Level Report. Mayor, the Lewisville Lake current elevation is 520.12 feet.
We're still floating, then.
Nothing, nothing to report.
Mayor, I do have one announcement. Officer Damon Taylor's going to come down. He's one of our cadet advisors. He's going to give you an update on a recent competition that our public safety cadets participated in.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Officer Damon Taylor. I have the privilege of being the lead over the police department's youth cadet program. If you're not familiar with the program, it's designed for kids between the ages of 14 all the way to 20 that have an interest in law enforcement. What we provide is we provide them with mock uniforms, we provide them with ample training on both procedures, the law, and different legal aspects of the, the career in law enforcement, and actually send them to competition so that they get to apply this knowledge against various scenarios that are realistic-like police scenarios against other competing youth cadet programs in the area. So having said that, on March 5, we sent two teams of four cadets each to the 2022 Grand Prairie Explorer Competition, where they competed against many other regional youth cadet programs. The teams consisted of cadets Emma Needhammer, James Olmstead, Jada Allen, Leah Rottermel, Gage Garber, DeAngelo Ned, Haley Door, and Shelby Mays. The teams were put through various realistic police scenarios such as robbery in progress, suicidal person, and even active shooter, and are graded on how well they handled each scenario. This was the first competition for five of the eight cadets that we sent, and I'm pleased to report that they scored high in many of the scenarios, achieving the following accolades. First place overall in their group, first place in the DWI scenario, first place in misdemeanor traffic stop, second place in assault, family violence slash suicidal person, and second place in bomb threat. Another interesting little tidbit is that we had not trained them in three of the scenarios that they placed in. So this is just a acknowledgement of just how smart of a cadet class we have this time. We have 13 cadets right now that joined us late last year and have kind of stuck with us over the time, and we grow each year as we get people to age out, and we get some new people that come in. So we are also unique as a youth cadet program because we are largely female, which is very rare for the police environment. It is changing, but most Explorer cadet programs are largely male-based, so I'm kind of proud of that. And the females that we have are very, very capable, very smart, and obviously are picking this up pretty quick. So I'm pretty proud of these guys. A round of applause for them, if you will. Just to give you a quick update, we are going to another competition on April 23 in Irving at the Singly Academy. We'll be sending one single team of four cadets, and then we're actually hosting our own competition in late June on the 25th and 26th. It's a unique competition because we do it overnight, and we actually dispatch the various competing groups to locations across the city where they have to do a scenario in the dark and stay up at 2:30 in the morning with the Monster Energy Drinks and stuff. So they get the experience of being as close as they can to being a real police officer. So I'm pretty proud of this group. Been part of the group since 2015, seen it grow considerably, I've seen it mature to what it is now, and we're definitely a powerhouse in the area, definitely name-worthy. So if you don't have any questions, that's it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The success of the program is due to the, the advisors that we have. We've got a great group of officers that do this, and it's a lot of hard work. They pour their hearts into it.
Thanks, sir. Chief?
Strong group in AOC tonight led by Tom Quinn and Chief of Operations, and fair to say that we were lucky and the armed forces passed this show under Watchfield 10 tonight, but it looks like we're going to tell them this in front of the speaker.
Thank you, sir. All right. I did have two quick comments. I wanted to thank our Firefighters Association for the donation of a wood chipper to the cleanup that was this Saturday at one of our historic Black Cemeteries. That thing was a godsend, quite frankly, trying to get all of that taken care of. So I do want to thank the service fraternities that were out there as well. We had West Side Baptist Church, which of course put that all together, and so many folks and friends and neighbors that I, I will miss some here. So my apologies for missing those that, that were there, but we had, had a great turnout. I am so proud to see these days of service coming back, and I hope to see a lot more of them as, as we move forward. I think that's another core piece of what makes Lewisville home for so many of us. One other thing that I do need to put out there, I have the opportunity to either make or break Lewisville's status as a culinary hotspot here on the 31st. The Lewisville Education Foundation has a Chili Cook-Off fundraiser, and this year they have pitted the three mayors against each other in this Chili Cook-Off, so I'm going to need your help. Of course, dollars vote, so you'll see and hear more of this on social media as we move forward, but it'll be on the 31st. It'll be at McAuliffe Elementary, and I will be competing with Terry Sullivan from Sullivan's Barbecue. So at least I've got, I've got somebody in my corner that, that knows how to make good food. So thank Terry.
Thank God.
Yeah, I know, right? So thank Terry for helping out, and I, I think we're going to be able to put some good points on the board.
I was worried, I was worried whether you were going to brulee the chili.
Brulee the chili? You know, we may be able to have something like an after-party where we do that.
Don't do it.
That's scary.
I also will be picking back up on our Tuesday night Facebook Lives from the mayor, so if you're interested in what's been going on in the city, we usually give a quick recap on that about 7 o'clock, but you can always go to, to social media and find those, those videos. I keep them online. With that, unless there are any other comments, do we have any closed session? All right. With that, council, if you would, we need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. And that is 7:36. It's Bob's fault. Bob's fault.